The order to Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, August 4th, at 7:17 PM. The first order of business is a public hearing for Stephen Flag, case number 2021-07, and public hearing for Steve Flag, case 2021-08. The board received a request from Mr. Flags this afternoon, looking for a continuance till September. Meeting is September 1st, so he'll be first on the agenda September 1st. The third case tonight is the public hearing continued for Jim Tavares, case number 2021-10. And that's the continued public hearing for 17 Reed Road. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to join us?
You're gonna make that continuance? We have to vote on that, do we not? For Flag?
No.
No?
Well, they sent it in and they gave us authority to extend it.
Oh, they already sent it in?
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Erin Riley, and I'm representing Jim and Diane Tavares, the owners of 17 Reed Road. First, I'd like to say thank you for catching that code noncompliance, because...
Well, I didn't have my glasses on. I told the deck, the other one that told me was stairs.
It saved us...
It was kind of a joint effort.
Yeah, it saved us a little back and forth, so...
Ken would've caught that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so appreciate that. I'm assuming I don't have to repeat what I said at the last meeting?
No.
Okay.
You made the corrections, I take it.
Yes, so I sent 10 copies, so hopefully you've all seen the updated survey, and then also the plot plan showing how we're planning to handle the drainage coming from the northeast corner of the site. So, the new plot plan indicates that there is now a four-foot by six-foot, or nine-foot, rather, landing, because it's outside of a sliding door, and the further end of it is where the operable side is, so that's why it has to be that long, and then the steps to grade. And we're still, you know, the house itself is still all within the conforming setbacks. Are there any questions or comments about that drawing?
I'm following you so far.
The landing and the stairs are still within the setback. I mean, still...
They're not within the setback.
No, they're considered part of the structure, correct?
Correct.
They are part of the structure.
Yes, okay.
It's showing that the foundation is within the setbacks, but not these stairs and landings.
No, instead of 25.5, it's 21.5 with that deck. Do you have a copy of that application?
No, that's what I was just looking for.
Let me have it.
Oh, the application?
The original application?
Let me have it.
I have it right here if you...
Well, mostly concerned about what was advertised, because it has to be advertised.
Sorry, Mr. Jim, I could've looked at that myself. Let me see if I can dig it up.
I don't think in my copy it had what was advertised, so maybe that, maybe you need to have your full set of documents.
So, the front stairs is too far out?
The foundation meets setback, but the stairs and landing are less than the requirement. But I apologize.
The stairs all the way around. Oh, exactly, outside of that.
Well, I did, I did, you know, research as much as I could in the Douglas zoning, and I also did reach out to the zoning office to find out, you know, what's allowed within a setback, because in many towns, you know, because you have to have a minimum landing, you're allowed to have, you know, at a door...
Not addressing.
A landing and then stairs to grade.
Yeah.
Mr. Jim, I get the whole thing here.
They allow percentage.
Give that back to her.
Usually it's above 40% of the side of the structure.
If you sound alone, nothing today.
No. They look at the whole thing as part of the structure for your setbacks.
Yes.
Right. So, according to that, the new plot plan brings the structure, if the stairs and landing are considered part of it, closer than the application. Application said that they had a 25-foot, .5 setback.
So, are you saying that you're counting the stairs and the landing?
Right, as part of the structure.
And this is the first we've heard of this as being a requirement?
No, I think that was said at the last meeting.
No, it was not.
No, it was not. I'll have to say it wasn't, wasn't meant, we talked about the 25 feet.
It was questioned, I was questioned at the last meeting whether that was considered part of the structure, or if they were, if you were looking at the foundation for setbacks.
And I believe I'm the one that asked that question.
Yep, and I remember Ken's response about that, that it was.
That what was?
That stairs, landings, anything outside the foundation are still considered part of the structure, and therefore you would need a variance from this...
Nothing, I just don't remember that, that's all.
Well, I remember asking the question, and the only reason I asked it was to bring it to everybody's attention, because we just had a recent case for a set of stairs and a side entrance on a house.
What I recall from the last meeting was that there was a question about the fact that the stairs on that rear side of the house away from Reed Road did not have a landing at the exit door, and that that was the, that was the issue, not that it was into the setback.
Right, but that's an issue between you and the building commissioner.
Right, and, and, exactly, and then, but, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
No, Mike.
Yeah, it was suggesting that I, that I make the changes now while we're still at zoning, anticipating that it would have to be made a change later.
Yeah, what I had said was, oh, sorry, Dan, what I had said was, check with the building official and find out if you need a landing out there. I didn't want to say that you need one, that's his job to come up with that, which I know you need one, but I didn't say that it wasn't part of the setback, because I had asked, ask Ken just for confirmation that the stairs and decks would be part of, is that part of the structure? And if this, regardless, it's only a four-foot by nine-foot deck on the back of the house, it's still a deck.
So, that's not considered a landing at the top of the stairs?
No, the issue is with zoning, is from the lot line to the nearest, closest part of the structure. So, the application says that the side yard requirement is 25, and you're providing 25.5. But on the new plot plan, it shows from the side yard to the steps is 17.6, 17.5.
Well, that was on the drawing the last meeting, too, and that was not questioned. So, frankly, because I couldn't find any information, you know, in the Douglas zoning ordinance, and I did reach out and ask, and I never got an answer back, so at the last meeting when we came here, you know, we weren't exactly sure if the stairs, you know, were okay or not. And then, at the last meeting, you know, no one said anything about that they were, you know, a violation going into the setback. So, I assumed, because the towns that I've worked in, like in the front yard, you're allowed to have, you know, a 10-by-five deck, even with a covering over it, going into the front yard setback, for example, and then steps to grade. And, you know, on a, in a side yard setback, you're allowed to have, you know, a landing for the stairs and then going down, because people recognize that, you know, if you want a door, you need to be able to get to grade.
Understood.
So, it seems punitive on a lot this size to, to say that, you know, the house and any stairs to get from the, you know, first level down to grade all have to be within the setback.
I've been here 16 years, it's always been that way. Lou, is that correct?
Yeah, in this town, yes.
Every town's different.
Every town's different.
So, no, oh, I recognize that, but so why was it not, why was it not mentioned at the last meeting?
I think at the last meeting, what was mentioned was the landings, and also trying to make these stairs so they weren't encroaching into the setbacks.
That was not mentioned.
I'm pretty sure, I would have to go back and look at the meeting to verify, but they were talking about, you know, minimizing the encroachment, turning stairs sideways, or whatever would be needed to make them work.
Right, but I don't, I mean, you can, you can go back, I don't mean to be combative here, but definitely there was no mention of encroaching, it was just a question of code compliance with needing a landing.
Well, we're not here for code compliance.
Oh, no, no, I understand.
That was just something to try to help you.
Yes, yes, and that's why, that's why I expressed appreciation, because I realized that's not your purview, but...
Can I add something?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So, I could, I could, let me finish for a second. I could somewhat sympathize with the fact of you calling out a landing, but by code, correct me if I'm wrong, is 36 by 42 outside a door. You have a porch on one end, you have a four-by...
Well, the porch is within the setback.
Okay, okay. Is that any closed porch?
No.
And you also have a shower on the backside of the house. That would be part of the structure as well, the way you drew it.
Okay, well, that, that, you know, we can let go of it. The thing that I'm concerned about is, I have, granted, I've not talked with Mr. Frazier in person, but with his colleague before, Mr. Caffeline, had, you know, extensive discussions many times, and this is the first time, including after having come to this meeting last week, that we have heard, and again, I have reached out and I can find the emails if you want me to, asking for guidance about what is allowed within setbacks in Douglas. And I, you know, I didn't read every single word in the zoning ordinance, but I did look for this information, and I did ask for this information. And the thing that concerns me is that the Tavareses have put in a lot of time and resources of other kinds toward designing this modular house based on the information that we had, that we could, you know, go up to the lot line with the foundation, or not the lot line, the setbacks, with the foundation. And now to be told that the only way that's going to work is if, you know, you put it at grade, so you don't need any steps, because that's essentially what you're saying, right?
Well, you can change your application.
That's what the whole thing is, the application says something different, it's on here. That's the only difference.
It was advertised in the paper as...
As meaning that setbacks...
As a sideline setbacks was 25.5, the rear setback was 25.5, the front setback was 50.5, but this most recent one is not so advertised properly, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so, I guess then, I'm wondering why, and, you know, things happen, I understand, but I'm wondering why this was not caught or, you know, brought to our attention at the last meeting, giving us a chance to have spent this last month re-advertising it and correcting this, and if what you're saying is it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to, you know, fix the stairs, but just that you're giving approval for the correct thing?
Has to be advertised properly, and then we vote on what we think.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Just take what you got here, go back and re-advertise, and give the numbers that are correct.
Yeah.
Where it'd be 21.5, 17.5, all of that.
Right.
Because it doesn't meet the setbacks with that inside.
Right.
And that's it, because we're kicking the can down the road right now, so...
So, it would be another month then, you're saying?
Yeah, we only meet once a month.
Yeah, we only meet once a month, so, sorry to say that, but...
It would be helpful to you to speak with the building official soon after this meeting to make sure that you fully understand what your issues are, because all we're here for is to hear and appeal to his decision.
Right.
Okay. We, regardless whether or not we love this or not, we couldn't approve it because it's not advertised...
I understand, yeah, okay.
...consistent with the plan, so you're going to have to wait a month regardless, but I'm trying to save you more frustration.
Yeah.
You reach out to Ken, he's here full-time, you're making an appointment with him, whether you talk to him on the phone, or you come in and see him, if you came in, it would be more helpful, because then you could clear it up quickly.
Right, right.
And then...
I'm sorry, can I finish?
Then you could come back with a complete application and plan, and he's going to be able to give you some guidance as...
And so, the next go-around would not be a continuance, it would just be starting from scratch again, or...
Yeah, we'd have to start from scratch.
Well, we did, yeah, it would, it would get re-advertised, so...
Yeah, it would be re-advertized.
We could waive the application fee, but we couldn't waive the advertisement fee, correct?
Correct. And you just want to make sure, like, and I don't know how much has gone into this, but it shows a set of stairs eight feet long, you want to just make sure that it, you can, you can put a legal set of stairs there and not exceed the eight-foot length.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what the grade is at the end of that, but we just had one recently where people asked for us a deck, and they were off by two inches on one end and six inches on the other.
And they have to come back to us.
And they got to come back. So, I would say, just make sure it all works.
Yeah.
I have, now that's an as-built, and the as-built is off. It's inch, but it's off.
They asked for what they wanted, we granted it, but then they exceeded it, so...
Not to say that they did it on purpose, something we had to do in as-built, and then made the decision, and actually they do it with a tape measure, so...
Yeah.
Can we go through with her what we're going to be looking for, other than what Ken's going to go over?
I would appreciate that.
As far as the, what's that?
I said I would appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to help you through this process. We typically want elevation plans, floor plans of what you're going to put up of the actual house, because the last time you came, there was two different elevation pitches, I wasn't 100% convinced which one it was.
Yeah.
And all this stuff becomes part of public record, this obviously is easy to refer to. I guess I would like the chairman's opinion whether or not we want to use a hand sketch like that for reference to put into the file, regardless of drainage. If it ends up, yes.
Yes.
If it ends up getting approved, typically we, you would have topos and stuff that would show how the stormwater management, and Ken's going to be your biggest help in that to tell you what he's going to be looking for, because that's something that he has to pay attention to, especially up in that area.
Okay, and so, we would fill out the new application indicating the minimum setbacks on each side as the request?
Yeah, like the 17.5, the 21.5, the 25.5.
And the front's 39 rather than 50.
After that, you're at 50, then 26.
I don't know what your grading is, but it...
Actually, the grade is 39 over here, and it says...
But it appears...
What's the staircase right there?
Yeah, that's the 39.
In the front, 39.5, and on the application, it says 50.5.
Right, so, looking at your plan, I remember the last time you talked about, because John's the one that made the mention of putting the stairs off to the side, and he had looked at them going to the right, looking at the front of the house, you said, no, the grade's higher on the left, so I'm going to go that way. But looking at your plan, how you hand-drew in these stairs, it appears that it's all on a flat piece of land. So, if you know, I'm trying to help you, so if you know your, your grading is on the property, you may not need that many stairs, you might not be 17 and a half feet from the property line, you may be less than that, so you should look at that, it may be helpful for you to.
Yeah.
And it's going to help us to have a more accurate picture of what you're trying to do.
Okay.
And the neighbors and anybody else that may be concerned.
We refer to what you submit in our decision, and then that's what the building commissioner enforces.
Right.
So...
Okay.
And as he mentioned, we just had a similar problem, that was only a couple inches, but there's, we can't do anything at all to help that applicant after they created this issue.
Right, okay.
So, they have to go through the process again, and they can't move into the house as a result, so that's a big problem.
And Ken is available, so it would be worthwhile to...
It'll save you a headache, yeah.
Skip the email, make the phone call.
Yeah, and what is the deadline for the, everything to be submitted for the next, for the September 1?
Typically, it's two weeks prior to the meeting, and the meeting's September 1st.
If you check with Ken at the beginning of the week, he can probably give you that after, he'll get it from the secretary in zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, we don't have that information.
I could also talk to Maria.
Yeah.
If you give a call, you can either set up an appointment, or if you show up, you're taking a chance whether you're here doing inspections or whatever.
Yeah.
If you call, we can definitely get you an appointment and sit down and follow the whole thing.
All right, very good.
Okay.
That looks good.
So, before another month goes by, and then, so, and I know you can't guarantee anything, but do, are there other things that we should be looking at changing or amending, or besides just, you know, the advertising, or is it, because I just don't want to tell the Tavareses we have to wait another month because, you know, I didn't ask the question tonight.
Well, we can't, we can't give you an answer whether or not we're going to give a thumbs up or thumbs down, but we're trying to give you guidance as to what to, to get a complete packet, so everybody can just make a good decision.
Right, but I feel like if I had asked that same question last time, maybe you would've said, oh, actually, you know, all these things are sticking into the setbacks, and that's not allowed, or, you know, something, so are there any other things?
Yeah, there could have been confusion in it, that's why I'm suggesting that you talk to Ken, because he's going to help you put together a complete packet, and if there's something he's unsure, he's going to reach out to the chairman, and he'll get that answer as well, so you won't come back with this confusion, hopefully, next time.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any other questions or comments for me?
Just want to redo what we just told you.
Yes.
Okay, so go back to the 21.5.
Yeah.
Okay, in the 20s.
Go back to whatever you need.
Whatever you need, I'm sorry, whatever you need, 17.5.
Appreciate that.
And, you know, I'm not going to keep that, you're going to make an annular application, just more, and of course, the last part was, of course, it took a longer fee on the last, have something done, it's not professional.
Yeah, 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 yep, 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 yep.
All right, I don't think there was anything else, Ken?
Before she works away, do we need to make a vote to waive her application fee?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, and do that to waive the application fee. I don't believe, I don't believe we, yes, and I don't believe we have the ability to waive the, the application fee, but we can't waive the advertisement, we can't do that, because it's not a mess-up, we're trying to help you with that as much as we can.
Appreciate that.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to waive the application fee, seconded by Mr. Bombara. Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. But it's clear that they're going to be paying the advertisement fee.
Right, yes, yeah, the responsibility will be to pay the re-advertization.
Yeah, but you have the rebuttance list, so you go down.
Do we have to vote on to continuance?
Nope, because it's going to be re-advertised.
Yeah, it's going to be a new case.
Right, new application, I'm sorry.
It's going to be a new case.
You're right, new case, sorry. Yep, sorry.
So, do we want to leave this one open until then, like John said, and do a continuance?
Yeah, we could do that, we'll close.
That way, we can keep it as clean as possible for it.
So, you want to request a continuance? And what, we're just going to keep it open, next month we'll close it and open a new one, but you'll have something in...
That way, it's in the system, yeah.
Yeah, it's logistics.
Okay, okay.
So, you would have to send the building inspector a...
I'd send it to Maria, just submit it in writing that you're looking for a continuous, we'll do it verbally now.
Okay.
And if you could just...
And it's Jennifer.
Yeah, because we don't have to worry about Maria's, because it's a special permit, we don't have to worry about the constructive approval.
Okay, so, I can look up Maria, Jennifer's email address, is the website updated?
I couldn't tell you. She's new to me, it's only been two weeks, I think.
Okay, well, I can call, it's fine.
Just call Maria, call Maria's extension 1476-4000, extension 257.
Okay, yeah, that's in my phone already.
Just give a call to the office, and I'll get you set up.
Okay.
Mr. Gay, any questions?
Sir?
Mike Gay, we vote, at the beginning of Erin's presentation, it was mentioned that what the other issue, and I understand the importance of all of the setback stuff, and that it takes precedence, that Ken is good that it's being addressed, but the other issue that was like mentioned and then skipped over and not gone into at all was the water remediation from the northeast corner of the lot that runs down to the lot, down the driveway, down the road, and washes it up. I think that that's an important issue, having just spent considerable amount of money to do repairs on the road personally, and having personally actually physically done the labor to do it, I think that that's another issue that needs to be in the plan, a part of the plan, so that there is at least something on paper that says that the water, because it's a considerable amount of water, if anybody's been up there and tried to drive in the driveway and fallen into the mud pit, they'll know just how much, or seeing the fact that the dug well, the old dug well behind the house, actually, in the rain that we had, was overflowing water, it was coming out the top of it. There's a lot of water that's coming from somewhere in this lot, and I'd just like to see it addressed, so that what we've done for work can continue to stay, and I remember I was there, I'm sorry, tonight, we did a really good job.
Yeah.
I'd say throw good money after bad, and I don't want to...
Yeah, that's what the reference was made for the stormwater management.
Stormwater management.
That's what, that's what that's addressing.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it is going to be addressed, and it will be a part of the plan?
Correct.
Because I haven't seen it addressed in the plan, or heard it addressed here.
Yep. Yeah, it's just referenced as stormwater management, so you might have missed that, but we did talk about it last meeting, and we, we just talked about it again today, and I also said that Ken would be the one that would be enforcing that and making sure it was right, so that's, that's part of his scope of work.
And the good, the good thing is, of course, the Tavareses are as interested as you guys are in this, so it's not like it's, you know, a downhill problem, like they have to drive on that road, so there's a lot of motivation on all sides to...
Well, there's great motivation, nobody wants to drive up a, with boulders sticking up on a dirt road.
Right, right.
And we fixed it so that nobody should have to begin, so...
Right, right, right.
The key is keeping the culverts open.
Right.
If we're still having this meeting, you want to see if those other people are here for that.
Yeah, we're opening up a new one, so if we're opening up a new one, so you really can't refer to what happened in the old case.
That's why we want the culverts open, and the water going in there.
You might want to pull that point up.
I think so.
The heat out there, you know...
Excuse me?
Yeah, one second. If I could, you, you, people may want to speak amongst yourselves, only, only because it's a new case next month, so anything that happened tonight no longer applies.
It won't have any bearing on the next hearing.
Oh, man, I want to come back next month?
Yeah, yeah, we like seeing you. So, if you want to have a conversation there, and if you want to talk to Ken, hopefully we can get this all worked out, but...
Okay.
Yep, all right, sorry for the confusion, but we'll get there.
Okay.
Get ahold of me sooner rather than later, and let's get this thing going.
Will do.
You can leave that, yeah.
Thank you.
You don't get to take that home.
Don't call me.
7:30.
Thank you.
Looks like you guys have done work.
No, it's another case.
No, we got another one.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to keep that applicant?
Yeah, you can hang on to John, certainly.
Oh, no, no.
I'm glad I brought it.
I'll call, yeah, got it.
Yeah, have a good night.
All right, we, I don't see the applicant here.
Are they zooming?
No, no.
I'm sorry.
No, so, one of you, you got one, two, three, four, you want to see how the other members feel, I don't care if I sit on it or not, so...
Yeah, but they're not here to make a presentation.
Yeah, how can you do something better?
Okay, I'm just asking a question, if you can.
Yeah, let me just clarify what's, what happened. This next case was Fontaine, they were approved, but they were approved, was an error in that it was two meetings. The first meeting, Lou wasn't here.
But John was.
Sean Holland was here.
Was it Sean?
Yes. The second meeting, Sean wasn't here, but Lou was here, and Lou voted, along with the rest of us, to approve it.
And you'd need four votes, and I recused myself.
But Lou technically couldn't vote because he didn't submit for the Mullen Rule. If you miss a meeting, you're supposed to watch it on tape.
Right.
Then you have a form to fill out with the town clerk, then you bring a copy of the form to the meeting, which isn't my rules, that's the state rule.
And you can only do that once during a hearing?
Yeah.
That's a state.
So Lou voted, and, which is fine, we all voted to approve it, however, because you hadn't filed with the town clerk for the Mullen Rule.
Okay.
You can't vote. So they only had three votes, so we're just trying to get it clarified.
The town council actually picked it up.
Town council's the one who brought it to our attention. So we just want to make it right, have enough...
So what do you want to do?
Well, I don't know why the applicant's not here.
Do you think maybe they thought that this is going to be just a voting thing? I mean, they didn't have...
I don't know, there was a conversation between them and Maria, and I don't, I, you know...
Or do they have to be here for us to vote?
That's what I'm saying, maybe we don't have to, because we already did it once.
We already did it all, just...
You know what I'm saying?
It's just a clerical thing.
Yeah, I guess.
Do you want me to ask Maria what she said, though? What the conversation?
Why do we all vote for it, and then if they don't, then if you find it different, we'll do something different.
I don't have any of the documents outside of one of them here. I'm going to add, oh, I don't know if I got it on this one. Being in the office, I didn't hear one way or the other, where the Maria had talked with the applicant and told them they needed to be here or not.
I know, I had a conversation with her a month ago, and she said that she was going to notify him that because there was an administrative error, that it was going to have to be heard again. I don't know exactly what that conversation was, but...
The applicant for 83 Webster Street, could you tell them whether or not they had to come to the meeting tonight, because they haven't come to the meeting? Okay. All right, okay, that's fine. Yeah, oh, okay. I don't know, what, yeah, we'll figure that out, okay. Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that we didn't make, we didn't do anything if they were on their way or something. That clears it up. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you. Yep, bye.
Technically, you missed the meeting because you recused yourself, Lou missed it, so it still only leaves us with three votes.
Right, see, I was here both times.
Right, Ron was here both times, I was here both times.
Yeah, yeah.
Lou was here once, and Mike recused himself once, so...
Look at the case number, what's the old case number?
I don't know.
It's on this thing. That's it? 2105, yeah, 2105, it's a brand-new case. 13 is a new case.
Which is fine, but we don't...
It was re-advertized as a new case.
Right.
But you don't have any supporting documents now for your new case. Good thing you had a chairman.
That's why I don't have any here. One of the many reasons.
It's real.